All right, are we ready to start? It is six o'clock. All right, welcome everyone to the Tuesday, February 2022, Oceanside Unified School District, Board of Education Regular Meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. I'm going to do a roll call. Board members, when I say your name, say here. I'll start with Raquel Alvarez.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mike Blessing.
Here.
Welcome, Eric Joyce.
Here.
Awesome, and Eleanor Evans.
Here.
All right, all board members are present and accounted for. We're going to go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Eleanor has graciously offered to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so I'll turn it over to her.
I would request that you please stand and place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. If you're standing, please be seated.
Thank you, Eleanor. Our next item on the agenda is public report of action taken in closed session. So tonight, item 1C, Conference with Legal Counsel. With a 5-0 vote, the board approved the placement of a student in a non-CDE Certified Residential Treatment Center and the request of a waiver from the California Department of Education. This is the OAH case number 2021060016. That's all I have to report out, actions in closed session. Moving on to one of my favorite parts of the night is student representatives. So we have three of them. I'm looking to see if they're let in yet. I see Gabby is up. Great. And let's see, do we have all of them? And Evan, I see Evan. All right, thank you. Evan, we're going to start with you tonight. Tell us what's going on at Surfside.
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Vitale, and guests. My name is Evan Hemmerly, and I'm the student representative for Surfside Educational Academy this evening. Congratulations to our January Students of the Month. Leon Robles Hernandez was chosen from Surfside High School, and Andrew McLaughlin was chosen from Surfside Academy. Both students received a certificate of recognition and a Surfside t-shirt. Surfside teachers and staff selected Leon and Andrew from the list of nominations. Each of them were described as hardworking, dedicated to accomplish the task at hand, keep up the good work, Leon and Andrew. Congratulations goes out to our goes out to Shanice, who says, Surfside February recipient of the Rising Star Recognition presented by the City of Oceanside Chamber of Commerce. Shanice, who is a senior, who is a senior at Surfside, was selected as a student representative. This young lady has faced many challenges in her life and has chosen to use him as opportunity for growth and using sensitivity and empathy toward others. After graduation, Shanice is interested in working with deaf children. On Thursday, February 3rd, Surfside's basketball team returned victorious after a 65-1 win over Ramona. The team has gained great momentum and has continued to demonstrate their hard work has paid off. Way to go Sharks. Mr. Nick Stack at the California Conservation Corps provided a great presentation to the high school students of Surfside on January 26th. He has provided an option to students through the CCC that could lead to a career in paths of firefighting, emergency responders, and park rangers. Many questions were asked by the students, and they were all left with a sentence that they had another option to consider after graduation. Since the start of the school year, Surfside High School and Surfside Academy combined had nearly 100 grads. Seniors who achieved this goal demonstrated self-direction and accountability not only in setting the goal, but also achieving it. We are proud of their hard work. Way to make it happen Sharks. The Surfside Library is a multi-purpose area that meets the needs of our elementary, middle school, and high school students. There's a short video sharing some details. Thank you and have a good evening.
The Surfside Library is a popular place on campus. Students can check out books on many different topics. The library is also used as a classroom throughout the day. All students can have their artwork displayed in the library. The Surfside earning outcomes are displayed above the books. From Surfside Educational Academy, I'm Thomas Warner.
Thank you, Evan, for the great report. It sounds like things are going great at Surfside. Our next student report is Oceanside High School, Gabby Kimbrell. Welcome, Gabby.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Vitale. I'm Gabby Kimbrell, and I am the ASB president at Oceanside. Sorry. So these are the things that we've been up to. You can go to the next slide. Thank you. So first off, our E-Hall passes. On Monday, January 31st, our staff and students began using the E-Hall pass system. This eliminates the use of paper waste and the amount of time people are out of class. It's a great source that we've been using, and it's worked very well so far. There's our Pirate swag. We have our student store now online, which is awesome. If you guys would like to go check it out, there's that, just a few hints. These are the sports we're going to talk about. We're going to talk about girls' water polo, basketball, wrestling, and our signing day. So water polo, on Thursday, January 27th, Mackenzie Collis and Malia Haynes had their first three steals. Kennedy added two more, but unfortunately, they couldn't pull the win against Canyon Crest. And then Belichick Cohen's goal and three goals by Aaliyah Bennett led the Pirates 6-2 with their win against San DeGuito Academy later that day. Our girls' volleyball, our girls' basketball, my bad, I'm sorry. In the avocado league, the girls have been playing against Sage Creek. They scored 15-4. Shout out to Nevea and Bailey, who scored 17, and Aaliyah, who scored 12 points. Our wrestling, the boys' wrestling team went to Hoaxville for a two-day tournament. Senior Billy upset the number one and number three seats. A girls' team competed at the North County Championship at RBV. Over the weekend, sophomore Aline is headed to CIF finals. Those are a few pictures of our girls' and boys' wrestling. Next slide, sorry. Awesome. So we had our signing day, February 2nd. During lunch, our five OHS students, we got to celebrate. Javier, he went to San Diego State. Emily Arnold and Lacey went to LA Mission College for volleyball. Bailey went to Utah State Southern for basketball. And Jonah Zimmerman is going to West Point for football. Our academic league had a game against Are You Smarter Than a 12th Grader on Thursday, February 3rd. In the Performing Arts Center, staff won, but it was a close game. Our photography class went to Balboa Park and explored the museums and learned about new picture-taking techniques. Sorry. And you can play this video, and it was created by OHS students about our OHS pride.
Welcome to Oceanside High School, the heart of downtown Oceanside, less than a mile away from the beach. Our beautiful campus prioritizes outdoor spaces with most of our walkways being at one with nature.
We show our pirate pride through our new and improved Wally Malafluwa Gymnasium. Wally Malafluwa was the first Somali teacher at Oceanside High School. He was a mentor and a coach to generations of students. Now, this is where our amazing team works hard, year after year, in pursuit of championships. If you're not one for sports, the Science and Technology Building may be dear liking. In this building, you have math, science, and the Environmental Innovations Engineering Academy pathway. We value our environment, and we care about the world we leave behind, future generations of Oceanside students.
Still not your cup of tea? We also have a state-of-the-art theater we call the PAC. We want to create a creative outlet for our students, a safe place where our students can be themselves. This new addition seats over 500 people and is designed to accommodate professional-level theater productions. It also has our Academy of Justice virtual training simulators. Oceanside High School's library is a place where so many students find their love and passion for academics, a place where no two stories are the same. Here, we value education and the knowledge you can only get from inside a book. The John Carroll Stadium is home to Number 55 Junior Seau and our Pirate Football Team, who have won 16 CIF championships since 1962 with legendary Coach Carroll. Underneath the bleachers is our very own weight room, which all the students have an opportunity to use. Our incredible baseball field is the home ground of our baseball and softball teams. These teams have many up-and-coming players, and the coaches are using everyone's strength to hopefully give us a good season.
The senior hall is the oldest building on campus. The rooms are smaller, but the environment is more comfortable. It is also home to our Wall of Fame. This is where we showcase our alumni, who excel in their line of work. We take pride in our campus and how we integrate our environment, studies, and the importance of our culture into our community. Welcome to Oceanside High School. We hope you loved it as much as us.
Awesome, and what's on the horizon is our Spirit Week, which is next week. Our Winter Pep Rally, our winter formal dance at the Vista Optimist Club Presidents' Week, and New Pirate Day and Night, March 9th. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabby. I liked the drone footage on that video. That was nice. Cool. All right, next up is Liliana Teta from El Camino High School. Lily.
Hi. Good evening, everyone, and thank you to Board President Dr. Biggin and the rest of the board members. To Superintendent Dr. Vitality and her executive staff and all who are present this evening for giving me the time to speak. My name is Lily Teta, and I'm the ASB president and student representative from El Camino High School. Starting off the week of January 10th to January 14th, this was the first week back from break, and our students were getting back into the swing of things on campus. Our baseball program also held a youth camp this week. The following week of January 17th through the 21st, the Rock Band Club performed in front of Cat's Corner during lunch. Next, our Dance 3 and ECDC had their show Friday night. Our January Rising Star of the Month was Marlon Benitez Benegas. Marlon is an extraordinarily bright young lady who has persevered through some challenging times. Her determination, focus, and character has led her to be a strong, passionate scholar and leader she is today. Marlon is on track to graduate with honors and receive the seal of bilingual literacy in Spanish and attend the University upon graduation. Thank you to the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce for recognizing our amazing scholars. Continuing the week of January
Lily, we lost you. You muted for some reason. You want to try again?
Oh, yeah, okay. Continuing the week of January 24th to the 28th, our college students are positive messages all over campus. Our drama department also held auditions for their next production, You're a Good Man, Charlie Brown. This week's athletic, athlete of the week was Ella Walker, being recognized as a girls' water polo goalie. Here are some highlights of our athletics at EC. Girls' basketball is dominating by winning streak of 11 games. They beat Oceanside High School twice, 61-27, and 68-28. Girls' soccer made history by defeating Torrey Pines for the first time ever, winning 3-1. Girls' water polo beat RBV 24-3 in Oceanside 14-8. Boys' soccer tied RBV 4-4, beat Mission Vista 3-1, and tied Carlsbad 1-1. Boys' basketball brought home four victories, beating Orange Vista 67-65. Beat Oceanside twice, 55-43, and 46-41. RBV 71-62, and Vista succeeded 43. Wrestling dominated RBV 54-18 and defeated Orange Gun 39-27. Thank you all so much for giving me the time to present. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Lily. All right, moving on to our next item, approval of the agenda, item 2E. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have a first and a second? Do you have no questions? I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Moving on to item 3, which is reports. Well, let's start with 3A. I'll turn it over to Dr. Vitale for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Biggin. I want to thank all the students for their excellent reports. And I think that that video could give Mr. Donald Benz a run for his money on O-Side Week in a Minute. That was an outstanding video, so I want to thank the students from OHS for sharing that with us. We're also proud to recognize Stuart Mesa for receiving the Purple Star School Recognition from the State of California. This is the first time the state has given schools the honor of this distinction. And Stuart Mesa was one of only 30 schools recognized for this distinction. And it is for military-connected schools and the supports that the school offers. So congratulations to the staff and community at Stuart Mesa. Last week, I had the opportunity to I'm looking for a word, watch, watch, observe our students engage in their portrait of a graduate work. And students from all of our secondary schools came together and were asked various questions to consider the future and how we're preparing them for the future and what their needs might be in the future. And their responses and their honest thoughts were so just beautiful, heartwarming, and I just appreciate their time, their energy, their honesty towards helping us provide the best educational experience possible. So for all of those students who participated, thank you so much. And for the adults that came with them on that field trip, I know we didn't go very far, but at least we got to go on a field trip and all be together. So thank you all for that. And Gabby shared that OHS has their Pride Store up and running. And I want to let everybody know that Oceanside Unified also has that Pride Store up and running with gear for the new logo. We have no affiliation with the store, and we don't make any money from the store. But if you want something with the Oceanside logo on it, you can find the link on our website. I've ordered a sweatshirt and a hat and can't wait to receive those. So with all of that, great news and just a lot of excitement from our students, I turn it back over to you, President Biggin.
Thank you. Thanks, Julie. I haven't bought anything from the store yet. I'll have to do that retail therapy later. So we're going on to item 3B, Board Reports. I'm going to start with Vice President Raquel Alvarez.
Okay, thank you. I don't have much, but I did attend an LCAP meeting this week. That was great to have those communications going on as we get ready to put out some surveys for our families and just making sure that the verbiage on it is good and strong for all to be able to understand and to report back of how our district is doing. I went to an OHS Advisory Council meeting, and the reports are great from what is going on there on the campus and how the support, the mental support and everything that's going on there. Thank you so much, Julie, just for doing that and including us in that process. I did a school site visit at Jefferson just to kind of get an idea before the mods happen and stuff. And so I just, I'm saddened by the look of everything, but excited of what we're looking forward to and what's going to happen on that campus. Thank you to Rebecca for inviting me into her classroom. Those fifth graders and the energy are much-needed health medication that I need because I love that. And so thank you, Rebecca, for doing that and to all that class because they were fun and loving and engaging and just welcoming. So thank you so much for that. And that's about all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Raquel. I'm going to move on over. I'm just going across the screen. Eric Joyce.
Good evening. So I have a couple of highlights. One, I attended the Career Technical Education Advisory Committee, which is just, again, mind-blowing. Every time I go to that committee, the work that our high schools are doing in CTE or Career Technical Education is really mind-blowing. There are students who are designing houses that, you know, can be on the bottom of the ocean and these tiny houses that they're doing the full mockups for, like, it's just incredible. It's just incredible. That's just one of the courses that they're working on. The projects were really mind-blowing. So I look forward to finding ways that we can get the word out about the work that they're doing. Another was a meeting with the Crown Heights families, and they were expressing a financial and difficult hardship on their ability to get their students to school because of the long distance from their home zone school. So I know that we're going to be working as best we can with them to make sure that they're able to get to school effectively for their kids because you got to be there to learn. So and then the third one is the Ethnic Studies Community Forum, which we held, which was so wonderful. Again, a very positive experience. Almost all the comments from the community were positive. It was, I was extremely proud and most proud of our former students who are still young people who are in college or just gotten through college, who came back and took the time to come back to this forum and let us know that they were really excited that we were taking the lead on ethnic studies in our area and that the history that they felt like they had learned in high school was incomplete. Now they've been in college courses and that, and they're just really excited to help support the efforts that we're having with ethnic studies course. And so I'm excited to work with them. That's really incredible. But thank you.
Thanks, Eric. You sound busy. Awesome. Eleanor, Evan, what do you have to share?
Hi, hi, everybody. Some of it's going to be redundant with what's said already, so I'll just mention it. Before I start though, I'd like to acknowledge the land that we on, that we live on, and it's basically was traditional territory, La Sueno, native people, indigenous people. I have a shout out to ODA. I want them to be aware that they now have a new CTA Board of Director for Region 4, and that's Keisha Bowden, who is also the president of Down South of STEA. So you need to get in contact with her. For this month, I attended the Leon Williams San Diego County Human Relations Commission and Committee. And we're looking for students or individuals between 16 and 24 to be youth members of the commission. So if you're interested, please go to the County of San Diego website. I attended the North County Prevention Committee. And again, they're focusing on, you know, not doing drugs, not smoking, not keeping healthy. That's the bottom line. And of course, you know, they're associated with the hospital, Tri-City Hospital, but apparently, once again, they are in need of funding. So congratulations to Robbie Hess for Martin Luther King Prayer Breakfast and receiving the City of Oceanside's Community Service Award. And our own Eric Joyce was also nominated for that. Okay. I really, really enjoy the CTE program, I'm sorry, CTE program. And it's just phenomenal. I agree very much with what Eric is saying in terms of having our, having our, our youth being involved with something like that hands-on and seeing the connection between, you know, the academic world and the work world. I think it's just phenomenal. And Ethnic Studies, I also attended hear the, hear the community overwhelming response for Ethnic Studies is phenomenal. It was a meeting that was extremely well organized. Everyone had the opportunity to speak. Everyone spoke very well. And it's, again, you know, like, as I've said over and over again, we're at the, we're the vanguard, we're at the forefront of Ethnic Studies as far as state is concerned. I attended the Portrait of a Graduate, and it was the opportunity for the adults to share their expectations and goals for our scholars. And this was extremely uplifting and empowering for me to realize that we're thinking not, not just here and now, but we're thinking in terms of what our future students are going to need and where they're going to be. Okay. Oh, Stacy will probably talk about TW. Yes, I'll save that. February is Black History Month, and I'd like to salute all of our counselors as this is School Counseling Week. And with Stacy, Trustee Stacy, we had, I had the opportunity to visit McCullough School. And that was, that was fun. That was reassuring at the same time. It was enlightening. And that's my report.
Hey, Eleanor. Mike, do you have anything to report? Are you going to unmute? I know.
Boomer. My apologies. No report tonight, but I appreciate all the work that you guys are doing out there and all the work that everybody's doing to enable you guys to report on the good things that are happening in the district, and it's just fantastic.
Thanks, Mike. Real quickly, I attended a two-way bilingual immersion meeting. My son is in the pioneer group of it, and he's in eighth grade in an EP class right now, which is exciting. And we got together, working with parents and teachers, to look at how to recruit students into our two-way bilingual immersion program. And speaking from experience as a parent, my son is doing tremendous, and the teachers are phenomenal. So if you're curious about that, check out our website. I also went over to McCullough, and amazing teachers over there doing amazing things. Checked out their campus and several classrooms with Eleanor, and that was, I haven't done a site visit in a while because of COVID. So it was great to see everybody, and we got to see a morning meeting in the morning, and it was, it was awesome. So thank you, teachers over there and the principal for inviting us. I also met with teachers from MLK and FUSAD and Jefferson. We have over 20 teachers right now that are interested in pursuing National Board certification, and that's really exciting. It's very rigorous, and just in the midst of all this work they're doing and with coming off the tail end of COVID, to even think about the work they need to do for that, and they're gung ho. So I'm excited to see how that goes. I also attended the LCAP stakeholder meeting with Raquel. And yeah, we, I got to work on the secondary questionnaire for students, and it's great collaboration. So that's my board report tonight. Our next item on the agenda is item 3C, and we're going to hear from our labor partners. Our first labor partner is California School Employees Association, the Oceanside Chapter 370. And we're going to hear from Dora Herramayo. So Dora.
Good evening. Thank you so much. Good evening, President Biggin, Board Superintendent, and Cabinet members. Thank you so much for this time that's being allocated to allow me to present and showcase some pictures and some of the things that our CSEA classified members are doing right now. Next slide, please. What's been going on? Many of our classified staff members from ESS have been sent out to our school sites to help schools cite offices during the staff shortages. Many custodians are working 12-hour shifts, eight hours regular time plus overtime to help maintain our school sites clean and safe by supporting custodial staff shortages. Classified members are supporting each other to maintain healthy behaviors such as walking during breaks. We all need that right now. Site staff are supporting positive student behaviors by distributing rewards for students who are caught behaving kindly towards others. So we're definitely working together for the good of all students. Next slide. We have a couple of site recognitions. At El Camino, we are recognizing Maggie Duennas, she's an office assistant. Jill Rissuto and Rosa Flanagan. I'm sorry if I mispronounced the last name. They're guidance technicians at El Camino. And their counselor Kathleen McCann would like to recognize the EC Counseling Center Support Team, Maggie Duennas, Jill Rissuto, Rosa Flanagan. Together, they maintain the flow of the counseling center, working with everything from documentation to registration and student support. The EC school counselors and school psychologists would not function without them. They are the wheel that makes the counseling center roll. Next slide, please. Another one from Jefferson. This one, they are recognizing Lucero Rodriguez. She's the school secretary and Herlinda Ahmad. She's the health technician. From Nicole Band, Administrator Secretary, who's recognizing them, I would like to recognize our school secretary Lucero and our site health technician Herlinda. They have very different roles, however, share the goal of maintaining student safety and creating a positive environment by promoting responsibility and consciousness. Next slide, please. And here we have a couple of pictures of some of our office staff at Oceanside High School. While they're doing the work, supporting our students and our parents. Next slide. And what CCA is looking forward to and what we're currently working. We are currently working with our administrators for professional growth, M Y U, and thus to support our classified members to continue their education and grow professionally. We are also encouraging CSEA to donate to the Catastrophic Leap Bank. This helps our members during extenuated circumstances due to illness or medical procedures. Classified Staff Employee of the Year is out. It is time of the year when we honor two of our Oceanside outstanding classified employees. Nominations are due February nineteenth, and I believe they need to be submitted to Christine Garrison at the District Office. Next slide, please. I believe that's the last one. I'm so sorry. So once again, we are working together. Am I done? Yes. Sorry.
No, you're good. Keep going.
So our, our members are working together, not only to make sure and ensure that all the work is getting done at all of our school sites, but also to make sure that our students are being taken care of, our parents are being taken care of. And another one of my favorite quotes from Helen Keller, alone we can do so little, but together we can do so much. So that's what we're focusing on. That's our goal. And we want to work together with our administrators and our teachers and everyone in our district community. Thank you so much for this time allocated for me to present our classified staff.
Thank you, Dora.
Thank you.
And thanks for all the work you, you guys are doing. Great. Item three D, Oceanside Teachers Association, President Tiffany Ortega. Hi, Tiffany.
Hi, Dora. That was awesome. Thank you for that inspiring presentation. That's awesome. Thank you so much. So good evening. I'm Tiffany Cooper Ortega, and I'm honored to be able to report on behalf of the accomplished and esteemed members of the Oceanside Teachers Association as their president. ODA members and leadership worked with OUSD on our ongoing committee work that's listed here. Additionally, we worked with HR to start planning for that new legislation that we are so excited about that's going to provide coverage of absences that are COVID related. Next slide. So I'd like to introduce you to Jo Anita Washburn. I love this time. I love being able to talk about some of the amazing things our members do. So you may recognize her, and you should, because she's been inspiring a love of music in OUSD for thirty-six years. She's taught at every school level, elementary, middle, and high, and at ten different schools, actually beginning her career as an interim ECHS band teacher. She currently teaches band orchestra and all levels of those classes and chorus at Caesar Chavez Middle School. Next slide, please. Ms. Washburn not only teaches the academics of music that are required for making music and that inspires a love of music with her young scholars, she also provides amazing opportunities that help her students experience music at a competitive level, a professional level, and in social settings. In these photos, you can see Chavez Scholars at Disneyland participating in a recording soundtrack session and receiving a behind-the-scenes look at a professional recording session for Disney movies. Advanced band and orchestra scholars also attend the Band and Orchestra Festival at EC, where they prepare three selections and perform on stage before adjudicators from the Southern California School Band and Orchestra Association. Next slide, please. Eighth grade students from Chavez attend the high school band night at an ECHS home football game. They learn some of the spirit songs and they get to play alongside their high school counterparts and enjoy the high school marching band experience. Ms. Washburn also instructs chorus at Chavez Middle School, and in these photos, students perform the Star Single Banner at a Padres game at Petco Park with other San Diego County chorus students and perform for their fellow chorus students from across the district at the District Chorus Share Night. Next slide. So pre-pandemic, the numbers of students that wanted to enroll in music had been really high. However, during virtual instruction, music programs across the nation lost students. I mean, can you imagine how hard it is to learn Ambusher via Zoom? I'm hoping my fellow band superstars will get that. And teaching music during the pandemic certainly has its struggles as well. Can you imagine teaching Ambusher via Zoom? However, the exciting news is that the enrollment at the Chavez Music Program is starting to increase, and there are many new players this year. The EC Band Mom and Me is really happy to hear that. Next slide. Finally, I want to say that I know Ms. Washburn because I was fortunate enough to work with her at Del Rio, but also she is one of the few lucky OUSD teachers who survived, I mean, taught all four of my children. So as an OUSD colleague, Ms. Washburn, I want to tell you that I'm honored to work with you. And as an OUSD parent, I thank you for affording these experiences and this passion for music to my own children and other OUSD students. Next slide. Finally, I want to spotlight the update of OUSD facilities. ODA members are excited to see the work from Prop H began at San Luis Rey, also known as Pablo Talk and Jefferson Middle School and other areas around our district. We hope the board continues that strong momentum to approve the rebuilds at Surfside and Reynolds. We see that the district office is on the agenda for tonight using developer fees and other restricted, restricted funds. And I have to admit, I'm often asked as the ODA president, what I think of this. Well, I'm going to share my opinion, and here's what I'll say. If our schools in highest need are slated for modernization and rebuild, and our OUSD staff and students' needs have been considered and addressed, we should address buildings in our district that are aged and in need of repair with these restricted one-time funds. These funds will likely not be available again, and we may never have another opportunity like this one to update facilities like this for not only certificated staff that work in those offices, but also our CSEA brethren that work there. Thank you so much for the time. I truly appreciate it. Thank you, ODA members, for working so hard. Keep up the hard work, guys.
Thank you, Tiffany. And I have to say, Mrs. Washburn is my son's favorite teacher, and during the pandemic, she talked him into going from the viola to the standing bass. So definitely inspired my son into his music program. So thank you, Mrs. Washburn, and thank you, Tiffany, for that presentation. Our next item is general consent items. And do we have any public comment tonight on our general consent items?
We do. We have two. Rosie Higera on item four C and Emily Witchman on item four L.
Great. Let's go ahead and pull them up and let's have them speak before we make a motion and start voting on that.
Dr. Begin, Rosie Higera is not in the room, so we can move to four L with Emily Witchman.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Moon. All right. Just a friendly reminder, and I'm sure Mrs. Witchman knows, but three minutes for public comment, and we're happy to receive them. Mrs. Witchman, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm speaking on consent item L, the ratification of the 2021 School Accountability Report. And as you know, this report summarizes a school's mission, goals, academic data, along with several other categories. I expected a presentation with at least the academic data, considering the many devastating effects of COVID nationwide. You, you would want to move forward to set a path and pathway for approving each student's learning goals, scores, and how the superintendent will accomplish that. You will need to know the stats from every school to understand programs and set expectations for students and certificated staff. I would hope you will set up a workshop to concentrate on getting our students from OUSD educated to compete with their peers in the surrounding districts for college and workforce opportunities. I worked at Laurel Elementary School during Desert Storm. At that time, it was an arts and performing school, and many of our base children attended. At that time, the school district was in a crisis mode due, due to the war and the many military fathers and mothers and grandparents with military connections. The staff held high standards, made the children's time at school one of learning, wonder, and accomplishment. Staff was compassionate, caring, and very understanding with the children, making sure of their well-being. All the children, all the children, military and those in neighborhoods, were very proud of their academic accomplishments, as well as our teachers, who were several of the finest of the district. The schools were havens of learning and contributed to children's stability by teaching them reading, writing, math, science, the arts, the performing arts, which they shared when their mothers and fathers returned from Desert Storm. Our district has been compassionate, caring, resilient, and can do it again. We need to educate our youth and our children for their futures, to be productive individuals, and to give back to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Witchman. Did our other speaker? Oh, there's Rosie.
Yeah, she's available, Dr. Begin. Rosie, you're, you're up.
Hello, Rosie. Rosie, you have to unmute. We cannot hear you.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, so I wanted to speak on item four C, where I guess you guys are trying to approve eight hundred and twenty-four thousand for class displays, boxes, mobile carts from Aridex Industries. So my question is why we're spending so much money to upgrade these mobile displays? That's a lot of money. And I'm also noticing on item seven A that you're seeking approval of Apple Mac mini devices for El Camino's Arts and Media Pathways Program to the tune of fifty-eight thousand. So I want to know what will be done with the older Mac devices that were purchased just five years prior. And I also read on your resolution number twenty-five, it describes what to do with your sale and surplus items. So you could either sell them, donate, or dispose of them. So it looks like to me, I mean, eight hundred, over nine hundred thousand dollars is going to be spent on things that we really don't need. I mean, our test scores for our students are so low. It's, it's, I mean, it's shameful. Our test scores in science and in math are just unbelievable. For our latest test scores, we have twenty-eight point seventy-two percent in science. And in English language, we have forty-nine percent, and in math, we have thirty-three point seventy-six percent. So it seems to me there is some kind of disparity here between all of the spending on equipment for the classroom, and we're not addressing the math, language, science, all of these essential things that our kids really need to learn. So it just seems like this board is really not focusing on the best interests of families in Oceanside, and we're not addressing our test scores here. I mean, our kids need help in all of these areas, and yet, we're just going on a spending spree. It's really ridiculous. And so I want to know where the accountability is with, with this board. Why is there so much rampant spending? And how come we're not addressing these issues, these main issues that our kids need to survive in the workforce once they graduate? I mean, it's really crazy. So I know that there are a couple seats that are open for election, and I hope that they are replaced with, with people that really care about our students and our community because this is, this is a waste of money and resources, and we need to fight for our kids. And so kids need to be at the center of our.
Thank you, Rosie. Thank you. I, just a reminder for public comment, if you pick an item that's on the agenda, you need to stay on that topic and not move around to other agenda items. So I'm just throwing that out there, and next time I will call people out of order. But moving on to, we have to, go ahead. Is there someone else?
Yeah, I was just going to say, this is on agenda items. So just a response. These, these displays are teaching tools that are to enhance the skills of our educators in the classroom. They are mobile, so it creates a flexible learning environment. So our modern teachers are able to pull small groups, use these kinds of displays to use their classroom and break it apart into flexible groupings where they could be responsive to student need and really teach in a 21st century environment. So I'm really proud that we're going to make sure that they have the, the tools they need to be successful teachers, as well as the curriculum maybe.
Thanks, Eric. Great. I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Eleanor. I have a first and a second. Are there any questions for staff or more comments? Seeing none from my fellow board members, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving the general consent item, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Moving on, we have a presentation. The annual update for the 2021-2022 Local Control Accountability Plan. I'll turn this over to staff.
Good evening, Board of Education. We have a slide deck that we'll be sharing. Good evening, Board. Tonight I'll be sharing with you the annual update. It's a supplement to the mid, with a mid-year report, and this is an information-only item. Next slide, please. This report is a special one-time report outlined in ed code to help build transparency around the funding received by local educational agencies to address student needs caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. There are four components to this report. The first one is the supplement to the annual update for the 2021 LCAP. The second is mid-year outcome data related to the metrics or data outlined in our LCAP. There's a mid-year expenditure report on all actions and an update on our budget overview for parents. Next slide, please. The first component is the one-time supplement to the annual LCAP update. Next slide, please. We will be outlining the ways that we have fostered community engagement, allocated our concentration grant add-on funding, how we've used the one-time federal COVID-19 funds, including the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 and other SIR funds, and of course, how we've used other fiscal resources and, and provided the applicable plans that are tied to those fiscal resources. Next slide, please. We've engaged our educational partners through our outreach to our community, through our LCAP Advisory Committee, which two of our board members do sit on, our District Parent Advisory Committee, our DPAC, our District English Language Learner Advisory Committee, our Special Education Local Plan Area Administrator. We've contributed surveys, we've had public hearings, and we've had site-level engagement through our school site councils, our ELAC, our parent forums, and other items such as coffee with the principal. Next slide, please. So we've increased the number of staff who provide direct services to students who are low income, who are multilingual learners, and are also or experiencing poverty or foster youth. We have assigned intervention teachers in our TK through eighth-grade schools. We have MTS and multilingual learner teachers on special assignments that provide support to our classroom educators through professional learning. We have increased our elementary assistant principals and counselors to full-time at all of our school sites. And we have, under the leadership and direction of our board, established four community schools who all have for a community school coordinator who is a manager and a leader who is going to help provide the support at those sites. a community school coordinator who is a manager and a leader who is going to help provide the supports at those sites. Next slide, please. In allocating our one-time federal funds, we use the same educational partner forums and processes that we did with the LCAP. This enabled us to create a coherent, aligned plan for our students that maximizes all of our resources to support student achievement as we emerge from the COVID nineteen pandemic. Next slide, please. We know that with every plan that we have implementation successes and challenges. The success we have had in implementing our Estler Funds in our actions have been really around purchasing of PPE where we lead the county in the most amount of PPE provided. We have had expanded learning opportunities through summer school and after-school and before-school supports. We have increased staffing across schools. We have provided resources for supporting students' mental health, providing technologies such as displays and devices, and providing access to the internet at no or low cost to students and families who need it at home. We've launched assessment tools to monitor student progress and meeting goals so that we are sure we can continue to monitor and adjust student progress as we move forward. We have had challenges, especially around finding substitute teachers, our facilities upgrades, and receiving some instructional materials due to national and local supply chain and labor shortages. Next slide, please. We felt from the beginning that it's really important that we create alignment with all of our applicable plans and prepare, and we've prepared a one pager that shows how all of our resources are aligned to our LCAP goals. Next slide, please. This chart shows how the key actions outlined in and funded by our COVID funds and our LCAP funds with supplemental and concentration are all aligned around key areas that we can use to improve student outcomes, health and well-being, and safety. Next slide, please. Now, we know that plans are only the first step in achieving our goals. We must monitor the outcome data and ensure that we are on the right track. So we want to make sure that we look at the data and the metrics as we progress through the school year to ensure that as we find opportunities for improvements, or we need to monitor our or adjust our plans, we are able to do so. Next slide, please. On this slide, you can see in bold the target metric or targets for several of our action items. The items in regular text are actual mid-year achievements. We identify that we have a high-quality teachers assigned to all of our classrooms, and students have access to educational materials and options around a wide variety of courses, electives, music, to TWBI, science, history, and athletics. We are closely monitoring our attendance, because our attendance rate of our students is lower than expected, and this is due primarily to the Delta and Omicron variants transmission and the increased case rates and the need to create to be sure that we're continuing the health and safety. While we had lower attendance rates than we would have wanted, school has been open for in-person instruction throughout this entire year. Next slide, please. The next section of the report has the highlights of our expenditures and our actions. Next slide, please. Our goal one, we outlined earlier that we have increased our counseling and administrative support at each of our school sites and provided resident certified subs and intervention teachers at all of our school sites. While we have budgeted certain amounts, we have a mid-year update of what we've expended so far and as we're moving forward in our implementation. The next slide, please, is about providing safe and positive learning environments. This is our LCAP goal number two. We have provided support staff for social emotional learning for all students and targeted counseling for by mental health providers and specialists for students who need more direct and intensive support. Next slide, please. We want to make sure as well that we ensure that we can support our families as we continue to prioritize our stool community advisors, our parent guardian caregiver learning opportunities, and our site-specific family engagement opportunities that we've planned for the spring. We know that with the reduction in case rates, that we will be able to invite parents and community guardians and caregivers into our schools in the spring in a more robust way. Next slide, please. The fourth component is around our budget update on the major expenditures that our district has allocated to support student learning, how much we've received so far, and how much we expect to expand in the future. Next slide, please. These two graphs outline the amounts of funding we've been allocated by the state. The total projection is what was promised to our district at the start of the year. The actual to date identifies the funding that we've actually received so far, and the new projection is the current promise to Oceanside in the manner of funding. Next slide, please. The pandemic has presented new opportunities and challenges over the past two years. As we've heard before, our teams are coming together carefully, and we have worked to ensure that student learning and safety and health and well-being are our priority. We've had to respond to challenges on a weekly and sometimes daily basis. Supply chain interruptions, staffing shortages, and evolving health protocols have impacted our work throughout the past two years. But under the leadership of our Board of Education and our Superintendent Dr. Vitale, the hard work of our teachers, our classified staff, and the faith and support of our families have allowed us to continue to meet the students and refine our work. We will continue to improve our processes and systems in the coming years to address the needs of all of our students, especially our students experiencing homelessness and poverty, students living with foster families, our multilingual learners, and our students with disabilities. We know that together we will use this fund, we will be good stewards of the money, and be able to provide those supports to all of our students so that we can provide a world-class education for all of our students. Thank you for listening to this informational report.
Thank you, Dr. Lovey. Do we have any questions for staff about the LCAP presentation?
Yeah. The chronic absenteeism being so dramatically higher than than in the past, I know we have a reason for it with COVID, but what are we? I'd like, if it's not tonight, I know this isn't in the LCAP, but what are we gonna do to address that through the spring? I know K-38 will go down, and that'll be part of that, but it'd be good to get an update, either maybe next meeting or the following, or what we can do to improve that.
Absolutely. We do. We have already seen a reduction from the height upon return from the winter break. We were at the height of case transmission throughout the state and county. And as a result, we had many students who were exposed and many students who were testing positive for COVID nineteen. And based on the CDPH guidelines, they were required to stay home. That contributed to a lot of the chronic absentee rates. But we've taken a lead in our district to provide the most opportunities for students to have in-person events such as proms and dances and opportunities to come back to school through a test-to-stay program, and now through a overall return-to-school approach. So just in the past few days, I visited a school this week, and the teacher told me I have all twenty-five of my students in school today. We're doing the lesson, we're on the road to recovery, and I've visited about five schools in the last two weeks, and all the principals have shared we are back on track, and students are excited and teachers are excited. So we can definitely talk more about how we are going to continue that great momentum and come out of this stronger.
And then the other one that I just wanted to plant a flag in was our parent feedback and community feedback. I think we do have a lot of different ways that we collect feedback. But one thing that I tend to notice when I'm in those meetings is we're not, at least from what I've observed, we don't usually say this is where you're giving feedback on how we should spend our one-time COVID funding. I don't think that was ever, please correct me if I'm wrong. I don't remember that ever being made clear. That's what we were asking in those questions. So there's an informed feedback that I think we could be continue to grow better at so that our parents and community members know exactly what their feedback is being used for and how it's going to inform. I mean, sometimes it's so important, and if they don't know, this is like, you know, this is how we're gonna spend thirty million dollars, then, you know, they might see it as like another survey and not really see the the whole view of it. So I'd really like us to focus on that too, communication-wise. Otherwise, that was a great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from my colleagues? All right. All right, moving on to our next item that did not require a vote. That was just a presentation. Our next item is item six Personnel. Six A is the approval of the revised certificated job description. So I'll turn it over to Dr. McIsaac here.
Thank you, President Begin and board members. As often is the case, HR brings job descriptions for approval. I have two job descriptions that would are for consideration for revisions. These revisions include updated language for the job functions as well as to better accurately reflect the positions. Both these job descriptions were last approved in two thousand and eighteen. The two are for the Teacher on Special Assignment English Multi-Tierred Support System, and the second one is Teacher on Special Assignment College and Career Readiness.
Thank you for the explanation. I'll make a motion to approve.
One second.
First and a second. Are there any questions for Dr. McIsaac? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving these new revised certificated job descriptions, say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. Moving on to item seven Curriculum and Instruction. Item seven A is the approval of purchase of Apple Mac mini devices for art, media, and entertainment pathway at El Camino High School.
Mercedes.
I'm sorry, I was had to intermute myself. So this is the approval of the Apple Mac mini devices for the Arts Media Entertainment Pathway at El Camino High School. This is funded through our CTIG grant, so this is a special funding that's targeted for career technical education. And the devices that we have before will actually be moved to Martin Luther King Middle School so that the eighth graders can have an opportunity to use them and then have the more modern devices when they transition into the high school for their pathway.
Thank you for the explanation. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
You have a first and a second. Are there any questions for Dr. Lovey?
Just to comment, this is an award-winning program. They, I think they went to New York this year to be recognized on their amazing submission. I mean, again, this is one of those CT that pathway that didn't even have a chance to explain how amazing they are and the things they're doing because there are so many, but, you know, this program is outstanding, and I'm so glad that we were able to get grant funding to support it. Well done, staff.
That's good news. Great. Do you have any more questions? I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item seven A, say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. Moving on to item seven B, Acceptance of United Healthcare Grant to Support Community School Initiative at Jefferson Middle School, and we do have a public comment on this, but I'll let staff explain.
So we're really excited about the opportunity to have community schools here in Oceanside Unified School District. Last spring, our Board of Education challenged us to develop these schools and these opportunities at four of our schools that have families who are most under-resourced. And as a result of that, we have our four community school coordinators. And we started finding out that there were people in our community, businesses, and individuals who want to support the idea of a community school that has the opportunity to remove all barriers to students achieving outstanding academic achievement. And so we were able to write a grant for United Healthcare Grant for seventy-five thousand dollars, which will be used to create a wellness center right at Jefferson Middle School that will be able to provide opportunities for health services to come in, learning about wellness, mindfulness, be able to help students to understand the dangers of vaping and other substance dependencies, and will allow us to even possibly have a place for students to exercise. That's some of the plans that we have in place. So we're very excited to have this partnership with United Healthcare Grant and to have that seventy-five thousand dollars to revamp that wellness center right in Jefferson Middle School.
Thank you, Dr. Lovey. So I'm gonna take public comment before we start voting, colleagues. Patty is our public comment. And I want to remind you, it says Pat, so I'm calling Patty, because that's what it says in my thing. So Patty, I just want to remind you that you're speaking to the item seven B, which is the acceptance of the United Healthcare Grant. So just just a reminder, you have three minutes. Go ahead, Patty. Welcome. I think you have to unmute yourself.
Found it.
There you go.
Yeah, I lost my other screen that described that, but I, it was just a quick question and just quickly looking over the agenda, I find it odd that, I mean, I guess you can justify it under, but that this would be under curriculum instruction because it's definitely, you know, should be under some other service. This is not, you know, this is health, not curriculum, not instruction, right? Am I right? I find it odd that it was under curriculum and instruction number seven. Just a question.
Okay. Are you done?
Is there an answer?
Well, we can address that when we start talking.
Okay, and do we, if you address it, then we get to ask for the questions, because there's no interaction on a discussion here, but.
So we, during public comment, you get to make a public comment. The board can choose to address that with our discussion after, but we will not engage in the discussion with you and answer your question. So if you have a list of questions, feel free to provide them now during your public comment.
Oh, okay. Well, I understand the whole, it used to be community schools were a volunteer thing provided by the parents and the and the administration, and they would all kind of get together and it it wouldn't be all this grants and funding thing. I mean, it's wonderful, but 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 this is not a curriculum and instruction item the way I see it. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. All right. So I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Great. And then let's, do we have any questions, comments?
I just want to, I, thank you. I just want to say congratulations on the district being able to obtain this kind of funding because it makes it a commitment from the community and stating that they will support community schools in the traditional sense of a community school, not a social gathering. And the more involved the community is on that level, the more successful the community school concept will be. So thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
I would, I would just ask, Dr. Lovey, is this under curriculum instruction because it is under the Department of Ed Services?
Yeah, so Educational Support Services is both around curriculum instruction, including removing all barriers that may experienced by students in accessing their curriculum and accessing their instruction. So the nurses, our health clerks are all under the purview of the Educational Support Services Department. So the school nurses, which are credentialed by the California California Teaching Commission, they have a credential. So therefore, they are actually around health education. That is what our nurses do, and so they do actually report at this time to me and soon will be for our new, for our replacement of our coordinator of student services. So yes, it's definitely part of Educational Support Services.
Thanks for the explanation. Are there any more questions or comments?
Just love it. When you get out there and lead, this is, you know, people start noticing and want to chip in and be part of something special. So it's exciting.
Yeah, I'm excited for that. Thank you again for continuing to reach out to all the community and getting out there and getting them and showing them just what amazing programs that we are offering within our school. So thank you. And I've been approached by several school districts within the state about our community schools and where we're at, and shared with them our last board presentation on it, and they were very impressed. So we're doing a good job. It's great. All right, I'm gonna call for the vote then. All in favor of accepting this United Healthcare Grant, say aye.
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 Right. Motion carries five oh. Item seven C is the acceptance of the K-12 Strong Workforce Grant Award for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two for our high school engagement.
Yeah, so we're very excited again with this is around ensuring that we have our career technical education in place. We will have a committee that we will be looking at, how do we make sure that our students are on track for productive lives? And full employment, economic competitiveness into the future. And so we were able to obtain a grant of around $36,000 that will allow us to fund a classified position that will be able to support and reach out to the community. So our students will be able to get high quality skilled jobs and be competitive in the future. So we're very excited. This is again CTE grant award and very exciting for our district.
Thank you for the explanation. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I'll second the motion. I have a comment before we vote though. When Sirside was doing their presentation, they made a comment about the California Conservation Corps and how it could lead into careers. Those are very good careers and they're very high paying. And to go from high school to do trading with CCC and then getting a state job. You know, that is phenomenal. That is phenomenal. A state or federal job depending on which direction the student wants to go. But again, you know, we need to compliment the district on being that creative in terms of anticipating and promoting our students. Thank you.
I agree. Anytime we can get money or a grant to support our schools. See no more comments, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of item seven C, acceptance of the K-12 Strong Workforce Grant, say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Dr. Lovey. Moving on to item eight, which is our business portion of the meeting. Eight A is the acceptance of Proposition H Bond Building Fund Independent Audit Report for 2020, 2021. Alternate over to staff.
Thank you, Dr. Begin. Proposition 39 requires strict accountability in local school construction bonds, which requires that an independent audit be conducted annually. The accounting firm of Nigro and Nigro completed the 2021 performance and financial audit for the Proposition H Bond Building Fund. The independent audit report concludes that the district's accounting systems are functioning efficiently and effectively to account for the Proposition H bonds. In addition, the test conducted resulted in zero findings and no recommendations related to the financials or performance of the Proposition H Bond Building Fund through the fiscal year ended in June 30th, 2021. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the 2021 Proposition H Bond Building Fund Independent Audit Report.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Oh. You guys, have a first and a second. Do we have any questions or comments?
Well done.
Yeah. All right. So, all right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of accepting item eight A, say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. Moving on to item eight B, the acceptance of the Independent Audit Report for 2020, 2021.
Thank you, Dr. Begin. The California Education Code requires that an independent audit be conducted annually. The audit report is designed to provide the public with a general overview of the district's finances and to show the district's accountability for the money it receives. The accounting firm of Nigro and Nigro completed the 2021 audit. The independent audit report concludes that the district's financial reports for the 2021 year accurately represent the financial position of the district and are compliant with generally accepted accounting principles as well as other legal provisions and that proper internal controls are in place. The audit report identifies findings and includes the OUSD Action Plan. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the 2021 Independent Audit Report.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll second.
Yeah. Okay, we got a first and a second. I'll make a motion. Thank you, Eleanor. Do we have any questions or comments for staff? All right.
No.
See none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of item eight B, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hey.
Motion carries five zero. Movie. Oh, I hear some. You got it? All right. There's a little lag time there. Item eight C. Approve the First Amendment and Second Amendment to the Purchase and Sale Agreement with MLC Land Holdings Incorporated.
Thank you. At its December 14th, 2021 regular meeting, the district approved the purchase and sale agreement for Pacifica to Meritage. During its feasibility review period, Meritage encountered a number of unexpected environmental conditions at the property. As such, Meritage sought an amendment to the purchase and sale agreement, reducing the price and extending the feasibility review period to account for these unexpected environmental conditions and subsequent increases in cost. The districts with the assistance of its legal counsel negotiated amendments, the PSA, to account for these unexpected costs. The First Amendment to the PSA will amend the following terms of the agreement. The feasibility review period will be extended by three days and now end on February 10th, 2022. The Second Amendment to the PSA will amend the following terms. The purchase price will be reduced by 500,000 from 15.8 million to 15.3 million. The second deposit will be increased by 100,000 from 250,000 to 350,000. And lastly, $250,000 of the first deposit and second deposit will now be deemed non-refundable, except in the event of a seller default or the circumstances provided in Article Five or Section 3.2. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the First Amendment and the Second Amendment to the Purchase and Sale Agreement with MLC Land Holdings, Inc. And authorize staff to proceed with execution.
Thank you for the explanation. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Do I have any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item eight C, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Moving on to item eight D, approval of resolution number 24, which is the 2122 Ratification of Contract Award.
Thank you. On December 14th, 2021, the Board of Education awarded the bid for the Dust Collector Air Filtration System and Electrical Repairs at Oceanside High School to Dust Collector Services in the amount of 205,930,000 dollars. Due to the amount of the bid award, a resolution is required in order to determine that the cost estimate of the public agency is reasonable and the cost of the bid received exceeded the reasonable estimate due to the COVID-19 related increases. Approval of this resolution ratifies the award of this bid and satisfies the requirements of the Public Contract Code. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve Resolution Number 24 as presented.
Thank you for the explanation. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Do we have any questions or comments for staff?
Comment. I think this is for our, one of our pathways again, and they're really looking forward to putting some of that amazing equipment to use. But I think this is going to help get their shop up and running. I'm excited.
I agree.
I agree. Can't wait to go check all those out. Great. All right. Do you know questions? I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item eight D, say aye.
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 Right. Motion carries five O. Moving on to item eight E, approval of settlement agreement with T-Mobile.
In May of 2008, the district entered into a lease agreement with T-Mobile to lease portions of the district's property for placement of T-Mobile's antenna facilities. As a part of the lease, T-Mobile has an obligation to pay for its antenna facilities' power consumption used at the property. However, during the period from June 29th, 2010 through April 31st, 2021, T-Mobile did not pay for any of its antenna facilities' power consumption used at the property. The district has negotiated a settlement for full reimbursement of T-Mobile's power consumption costs during this period. The settlement agreement to T-Mobile will, T-Mobile will reimburse the district for $67,171.56. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve execution of the settlement agreement with T-Mobile.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion.
A second. All right, we have a first and a second. Do we have any questions or comments for staff? I wanted to say something. I want to applaud the staff because we asked you all to start finding things, to start looking at things deeply. And you have done that and things like this are coming up that for years have not been caught. So I want to thank you and I applaud you because we're asking for things to happen and they're starting to happen. So thank you for that.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you saying that.
With that said, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor of approving item eight E, approval of settlement agreement with T-Mobile, say aye.
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 Right. Motion carries five O. Moving on to item eight F, award RFP 2022 dash oh one dash oh five OP.
Great. On June 20th, 2021, the Board of Education approved staff to proceed with the construction of new buildings to house all district office departments and functions. On November 23rd, 2021, the district published a request for proposal project construction management services for construction of new district office. Proposals were received from six qualified firms. The district staff interviewed four firms. After review, the district recommends awarding this contract to California Construction Management, Inc., Moss Companies, also known as CCM Moss, at a cost of $1,166,020. The term of the agreement is through February 7th, 2027. However, the contract will end once the project is completed. This project will not be funded by any bond funds. We utilize our capital facilities fund for this. It is recommended that the Board of Education award the RFP for the Project Construction Management Services for construction of the new district office to the California Construction Management, Inc., Moss Companies for the amount of $1,166,020.
I will, I will emphatically make that motion.
All right, you make the motion. I'll second it. How's that, Eleanor?
Sounds great.
All right. Do we have any questions for staff or comments?
I'm just, want to just comment, commend staff for bringing this forward. I, I wanted to try and get something going on this ever since I've been on the board since 2008 and it's been a struggle, but it's, it's, it's time is finally right. It takes convergence of circumstances and some stick to it in this over these years to, to serve our employees, right? And get them into good facilities that are going to help them work better and smarter for the families and our students in the district. So I'm really excited and so happy to see this come to fruition.
Thanks, Mike, and I totally agree with you. And we're not using any bond funds to do this, but I'm super excited because we're gonna, this project is going to provide a space for parents, community, school board, accessibility. I'm just excited for our employees to have a safe and conducive working environment. I just want to say I'm just happy because at least everybody will be in one place to be able to communicate to work so that we can actually be there to support our families and our students in a way that we really need to. So that one person is not saying and forgetting and dropping the ball on one end of it from one end of the street to across the other street. So thank you. And just let's, let's do this as soon as and as fast as we possibly can to, to support our students and our families in an amazing, amazing way that we possibly can. Great. All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item eight F, say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. Moving on to item eight G. Approval of Resolution Number 25, 20, for the 2122 school year, the sale and disposal of district owned surplus personal property items.
Thank you. As part of the elementary furniture project, staff has inventoried surplus district owned personal property and identified the items no longer needed. The disposal process includes multiple steps, including first auctioning the items, then conducting a private sale, then we offer the items to charitable organizations, and lastly, we dispose of the surplus property. However, because we've partnered with Demco on this project, they are working with IRN or the Reuse Network. The Reuse Network provides furnishings and equipment to charities in the U.S. and around the world. And so in the event that we can't first auction or sell, then IRN will be taking our items. The district staff has reviewed the conditions and estimated value of the items listed. Upon reviewed, has been determined that the value of the items listed exceeds $2,500 in current market value. Approval of this resolution notes that the Board of Education agrees with the staff estimated value and authorizes staff to proceed with a public auction sale, subsequent private sale, donation and other disposal in accordance with the Education Code provisions. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve Resolution Number 25 and authorize the district staff to dispose of such property as recommended.
Thank you for the explanation. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move approval. Thank you.
Right. All right, we have a first and a second. Do we have any questions for staff? Comments? See none. I, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor of item eight C, say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. Thank you. So that was a long business, right? Moving on to item nine, diversity, equity and inclusion. Item nine A is ratification of memoranda of understanding for expanded learning opportunities. I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Dr. Begin. Good evening, board members and Superintendent Dr. Vitale. We are excited to bring for an opportunity that will allow us to expand our before and after school learning opportunities to nearly 3,000 students across OUSD, effectively 20% of our students at no cost to our families. So the ratification of our MOU for expanded learning opportunities allows us to use new grant funding called the ELOP Grant Funding Source beginning in January all the way to June this year, and then again for the next two to three years. This will bring an addition of eight before and after school programs to previously uncovered sites. It will bring an expansion of at least 25 before and after school programs, effectively clearing any wait lists that currently exist. And it will bring all of our schools K-8 hold to be able to bring a before and after school program at each site. Again, at no cost to our families. And then in June, we'll begin looking at how we use the remainder of the ELOP funding for the next two to three years to continue providing summer intercession opportunities before and learning, before and after school learning opportunities. So we are recommending that the Board of Education ratify the MOU with these providers to operate expanded learning opportunities programs for the 2122 school year.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We got a first and a second. This is exciting. Any comments or questions for staff?
Yeah, just, this is really exciting. I'm really glad that we're able to offer this to our community members. You know, before and after school is extremely important. One really important part of this is that it is an expanded learning opportunity. And so I, remember Alvarez and I met with staff about what we can do to make sure that our programs are providing the high quality learning opportunities. And so I know that we have great programs, but I just want to make sure that we're using this as an opportunity to springboard our students and accelerate their learning and enrichment over the next couple of years while we do have this funding because this is really a targeted, almost a targeted intervention that we have access to. So I'm really excited. Thanks for bringing this forward and I definitely support. Thank you.
All right. Any more comment?
I just want to thank you all. Like Mr. Joyce said, we just, we had a long discussion about this and it's been something that we've been looking forward to and trying to get. I know we've had wait lists and it's just been kind of crazy with everything and trying to support every student with the different things that we're doing. So as we go through this, as Mr. Joyce said, that we just continue to focus on furthering them so that we can make sure that our students succeed as we know that that's our number one goal that as we support before and after doing these things that anything that we need to do to be able to continue to do that, that we would do that with that focus always in mind and with that every, with every intention of doing the best for the student. So thank you.
Thank.
All right. Sorry, I do have one question. Are we, do we have a scheduled date when we're going to get an update on what the staff is thinking about for the summer learning opportunities? Do we know what board meeting we're going to get more information about that? Will it be March or April?
Mercedes, did you hear that question?
I did. We are actually currently actively talking with our partners for our summer learning programs. We're keeping several things in mind. We want to make sure that it is targeted to improve student outcomes, especially around literacy and math. At the high school level, we will be offering a six week session. At the high school level, we will be offering a six-week session because that is what is required to ensure that they can be credit recovery and credit acceleration. At our middle and high schools, we're looking at a four-week session that will be a four-day-a-week, four-day session that will be offered to all of our students and with the priority for our students who are experiencing homelessness and poverty, are multilingual learners. And in addition to that, we will have a five-week session that will be for our students with special needs who are eligible for extended school year. All of those processes are in the works, and we will be getting details out to families very soon.
So that was a four-week session for elementary and middle?
Yes, and it will be backing up with the grant that Dr. Sparks just shared with you to expand that with camps and enrichment activities as well during the summer so that there'll be a robust, we have about six weeks, six and a half weeks of summer, and so we'll be able to provide great programming. And we're working with Dr. Sparks on this to leverage our grant funding and our SIR funds to provide a robust summer program.
Sounds great.
That sounds great.
I will call for the vote. All in favor of approving item nine A, say aye.
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 Right, motion carries five oh. Moving on to policy development. Ten A, the approval of continuation of electronic or virtual board meeting through the month of March, twenty twenty-two. I'll make a motion to approve that we stay virtual. A second.
Second.
Have a first and a second. Do we have any comment, questions?
Yes, because I'm gonna vote, no, I'm just gonna give my reason. I think that now that we're down, I think the statewide, the infection rates have come down sixty-some percent. The indoor mask mandate's gonna sunset here soon. We are definitely need to stay safe, and we definitely need to continue to follow all the guidelines. Mask, I know, our family mask all the time, indoors, sometimes outdoors in crowds. That being said, I do believe that we have responsibility to hold this in public, and I think we can get significant community input, both through live public comment and through KOCT streaming and still meet the needs of what we're, what we're asked to do. So, I will be voting no.
And I, the parents and teachers that I've been talking to are able to access these meetings, which are public, virtually, at home while they're doing things and attend, and also participate in public comment they may not be able to get out and do when we do face-to-face meetings. So, I mean, it's, I know they can watch it on TV, but the public comment they have to be present for, our public comment is open. So, I'm gonna support this for the month of March. Seeing no more comments, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of holding our March meeting virtually, say aye.
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 Oh, no, sorry, not I.
Motion carries four one, Eric, and thank you for providing your, your rationale. I appreciate that. All right, moving on to item ten, we got a lot of stuff here. I'm looking at my notes here. Item ten B, approval of resolution number twenty-six. This is the proclamation for National School Counseling Week. And trustee Raquel Alvarez, Vice President, would you like to read this proclamation for us before we vote on it?
I would love to, thank you. Proclamation, resolution number twenty-six, twenty-one, twenty-two, National School Counseling Week, School Counseling Better Together. Where school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential, and where school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents at these traits, relate to career awareness and development, and where school counselors help parents, guardians, caregivers focus on ways to further the education, personal and social growth of their children, and where school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves, and where school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society, and where as comprehensive development school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. Therefore, the Ocean Side Unified School Board of Trustees do hereby proclaim February seventh, three eleven, twenty twenty-two as National Counseling School, Counseling Week, sorry.
Thank you, Raquel, for reading that. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All right, and I, I have to give a shout-out. My son's in middle school, and his counselor, Mr. Simi, has been instrumental in helping my son with all kinds of middle-school-type things that he's experiencing. So, those counselors, they work really hard for our kids, not just academically, but supporting their social-emotional needs. Any comments or questions for staff?
I just wanna thank our counselors overall, cuz I have a high schooler. Then he's been at both schools now, both high schools, and at, at both sites, they've been amazing and supportive, not just of my student, but of all students. So I appreciate them and thank them, along with the support that they look for our additional, our additional groups that are within the district to help our students. And so they seek out to be able to do whatever is best for our students. So, I thank you all for everything. You're much appreciated. Thank you.
Thanks, Raquel.
Shout-out to Miss Amanda, and yeah, I mean, it, it is, it's pretty incredible. The LCAP put forward, the LCAP Committee put forward counselors in all of our elementary school sites, and, and we're seeing the benefits of it in our kids right now. So, it's tremendous.
Right. That's what you get when you got three parents on this, on the school board, where I'll experience it from a different angle. All right, I'm gonna call for the vote to approve this proclamation. All in favor of approving this item, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries five zero. Moving on to the next item, ten C, approval of resolution number twenty-seven. This is the proclamation for Black History Month. Eleanor has so graciously offered to read this proclamation.
Proclamation, recognition of February as Black History Month, resolution number twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two. Whereas in nineteen twenty-six, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, noted Black scholar and founder of the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, initiated Negro History Week in the, in the second week of February to conclude or coincide with the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass. This week has since expanded to be known as Black History Month. And whereas during Black History Month, there is an annual celebration and recognition of achievement and contributions of Black and African-Americans, a time for recognizing the Civil Rights Movement, the central role of members of the African diaspora throughout history in the United States, in California, and locally in Ocean Side, in the economic, cultural, spiritual, and political develop, development of our country as artists, scientists, educators, entrepreneurs, influential thinkers, faith leaders, athletes, and political and government leaders. And whereas we cannot ignore nor erase the consequences of our country's history of violence, of discrimination, and of deprivation of Black and African-American people, yet we can commit to working together and sharing in the rich culture of this community for the purpose of responsibility, reconciliation, and recognition. And whereas Black History Month is a time for all Americans to remember the stories, teachings, joy, suffering, love, achievement, strength, and humanity of Black and African-Americans who gave, who gave a voice to the daily struggles for freedom, equality, diversity, equity, and inclusion. And whereas Black History reflects a determined spirit of perseverance and cultural pride in its people's struggle to equally share in the opportunities of a nation, which used slavery as an economic driver, squaring with the values of freedom and justice for all people, and that members of the African diaspora and Black and African-Americans have participated in every effort to secure, protect, and advance the cause of freedom and civil rights, and continues to resist systemic racism. And whereas the Ocean Side Unified School District has established departmental diversity goals that are geared towards the ongoing diversifying of our workforce so that it becomes more representative of the students we serve. And whereas our curriculum must reflect the lived experiences of people of different racial, religious, and ethnic groups. And to this end, Ocean Side Unified School District has led the way in the development and implementation of an ethnic studies high school course that will benefit all students towards the end of building more inclusive and belonging-learning environment. And whereas all students deserve an opportunity to understand the common humanity underlying all people, to develop pride in their own cultural identity and heritage, and to respect and accept that identity and heritage of others. And to this end, Ocean Side Unified School District subscribes to the Fair, Accurate, Inclusive, and Respectful Fair Act, which not only requires the teaching of history to include the challenges, trials, and struggles of Black and African-Americans, but also the triumphs, contributions, and excellence of Black and African-Americans inclusive of February and throughout the year and the curriculum. And whereas the district partners with community-based organizations and our school Black Student Unions and other student-led groups to support the organizing and promotion of Black student success and cultural to further its efforts of forming strong relationships in a culturally-appropriate way and to provide feedback and guidance to district leaders on improving outcomes and providing opportunities for Black and African-American students. And whereas the Ocean Side Unified School District has taken an equity stance regarding our commitment to closing the achievement and opportunity gap for Black and American and African-Americans and creating an educational environment where all students can benefit equally from the educational programs offered and where Ocean Side Unified School District is working towards eliminating the racial predictability and disproportionality on all aspects of education through the establishment of a culturally proficient educator committee, update and current board policies, and ethnic studies course, and implementation of the Fair Act. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Ocean Side Unified School District hereby recognizes the month of February twenty twenty-two as Black History Month and encourages all educators to be reflective and commemorate this occasion with appropriate ceremonies, instructional activities, and programs, and, and to consider how these same practices can extend beyond the boundaries of February. Thank you.
Thank you, Eleanor, for reading that important proclamation. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a first and a second. Any comment? All right, seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Well, I do have a comment. It's just a historical fact that in nineteen seventy-six, Joe, President Joe, for extended Negro History Week to be Black History Month, and he made the statement that it should be taught year-round and embedded in the curriculum. And on a more personal note, I really would love to see that notion side, as well as other school districts. Sometimes, you know, I've heard educators say, well, I don't know how to teach it, or I'm afraid to teach it. You know, it's, it's, it's mandatory. It's part of the curriculum. And it's not just history starting with sixteen nineteen in terms of Blacks' contribution to history, but, you know, the pre-European period, the medieval period. So, you know, it requires research and requires us to support those, those educators who are doing this. Thank you.
Thanks, Eleanor. Eric?
I'm just, I'm just really proud of our district for taking a strong stand in this and providing not only the safe environment for our teachers to teach, where across the nation right now, teachers are being told not to teach a true history because it might make somebody uncomfortable. So, I'm really proud of our district for taking a strong stance, teach a true history, teach it to everyone. Everyone needs to know it. I'm really proud to be part of this effort. So, proud of this board for taking this strong stance.
Thanks, Eric. With that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of supporting resolution number twenty-seven, the proclamation for Black History Month, say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. Moving on to item D, adoption of board policy zero four seven zero COVID-nineteen mitigation plan. We do have one public speaker in this, but I'll let staff explain.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Begin. This, this recommendation puts into policy what the district, OUSD, has already been doing and what we've already used as our approach and our plan and our practices, and effectively looks at the CDPH, California Department of Public Health, and Cal-OSHA recommendations, and ensures that we have a safety mitigation plan as, as a district-wide approach. So this really just solidifies our COVID-nineteen mitigation plan that we've been operating with since March of twenty twenty and makes it formally board policy. So we recommend that the Board of Education adopt board policy zero four seven zero, our COVID-nineteen mitigation plan.
Thank you, Dr. Sparks. It looks like we have one public comment, Anne?
Yes, from Colleen Carter.
Hi, Colleen.
Hi.
Welcome, welcome.
My, good evening. My name is Colleen Carter, and I'm a teacher here in OUSD. A little over a year ago, I was diagnosed with cancer. During that time, I have undergone a surgery, chemotherapy, radiation, and another surgery. I feel like I make medical decisions every month, if not every week, summer life-altering and summer life and death. During all of this, I had to make a decision on whether or not to get the COVID vaccine. Because of complications with the chemo, I decided not to get it while we figure out my ongoing medical issues. I was so grateful that I was given the option to test weekly, and I diligently did this since the beginning of the year. Due to my illness, I had to take a medical leave last year. They used up all of my cumulative, cumulative sick days. I was able to return this year with ten days, but with three oncologists, multiple doctor's appointments, surgery in December, and life in general, I had used half of my days before we even went on break. Unfortunately, I got COVID the day I was supposed to return. This is when I realized that this district has a two-tier caste system, the vaccinated and the unvaccinated. The CDC Director Rochelle Walensky has stated publicly that the vaccine does not stop the transmission of COVID, especially the Omicron variant. It is also publicly documented in the CDC study that the viral load in a vaccinated person is the same as in an unvaccinated person. This is evident by the fact that vaccinated, boosted employees are getting COVID the past couple of weeks. Some have even come to school not knowing they had COVID and found out they were infected while on campus. So we could say we're all in the same boat, except we are not. The days that vaccinated teachers were out sick, OUSD is covering their sick days with CARES Act money. People like me that are not vaccinated but still work hard and bill it and followed the district directive to test each week, do not get COVID sick days, and they wipe out what we have left, and if you run out, they dock your pay. This policy is just plain wrong, especially in the light of the variants and changing science. The district receives CARES Act money to help with COVID expenses related to it and could use the money for everyone equitably instead of only those the district seems to value. And to make it worse is to know that the district is using this money to buy furniture for classrooms. Is that what the money was supposed to be used for? I don't think it makes the employees feel valued. This policy, policy should be reevaluated because even though it is too late for me, I know there are many unvaccinated people who it can impact. Do the right thing, unless you really do believe that we are not all equal. If you believe that the unvaccinated deserve to be punished, that is sad. I truly hope that this is not your belief, but if it is, be sure to next time when you say how much you appreciate and value our staff and teachers, clarify you only appreciate those you deem worthy.
Daisy, may I say, I need to say one thing. Ms. Carter, will, will you please give Todd McAtier a call? Ms. Carter, will you please give Todd McAtire a call? There have been some updates, I think, and updated information you might need to know. So he is the Associate Superintendent of Human Resources, so please call him tomorrow. That's all I needed to say.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Spark? Or Dr. Norman, I just saw her pop up. Regarding this policy? I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Just in a second, do I have comments, questions? I'm looking at my board colleagues here. I am concerned when we hear from one of our employees that has a medical condition that was unable to get vaccinated, that they're running out of sick days and they're not able to access the COVID days. So that concerns me, so I'm hoping that Dr. McAtire can work with Ms. Carter on that.
I have I have a question in terms of our staff running out of sick days. For me, I've been in that position, but doesn't the district promoter have extended sick days, half days, and if you don't have those days, is the district able, are people in the district able to donate their days, or at least one day, from their own sick leave to that person? Catastrophic, you know, sick day.
Catastrophic leave bank is what you're calling it.
Right.
The district does have a catastrophic leave plan and we do allow employees that meet the requirements who have enough bank time to make donations. That window is actually open right now this month where employees certificate and classified. Both those unions agreed to reopen that because we are running low on time to be available for other employees. So that's currently open, the window is open for all our employees to donate to that bank.
Thanks, Dr. McAtire. So that's not a constant thing that goes on all the time, but they could at any point in time just decide, hey, I can do this and I have the available time that I can donate then?
No, it's in both contracts with CSBA and ODA that it's defined when that window opens and employees are notified that they can make donations.
I don't see any more questions. I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor of supporting board policy, I'm looking for it. B, 0470 COVID-19 mitigation plan, say aye.
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 Did I hear from Eric and Raquel?
Aye.
I think I'm gonna, I think I have to say no on this. I'm only talking only for myself, only because of the different things that I've had to go through with all of this stuff. And having a delay of just getting the vaccines of certain, you know, getting my booster and all that stuff. So I worry that we're not looking out for everybody because I am that all means all. And so unless there's something else that somebody can share that helps me understand how we are not, what I'm not seeing to understand this, to go different with what Ms. Carter has shared, then I would have to stay with a no.
All right, motion carries four one. All right, moving on to the next item. Thank you for sharing, by the way, board. Is the approval of revisions to Board Policy 3600 consultant?
Thank you, Dr. Begin. This policy is being updated to reflect new law AB 2257, which recodifies the three-part test established to determine whether a person providing services for remuneration should be classified as an employee or an independent contractor. The update also reflects new laws AB 2257 and AB 323, which establish exceptions to use the three-part test. Lastly, the requirement to afford equal opportunity for contracts was revised to add ethnicity and reflect new law AB 3364, which changes the term military and veteran status to veteran or military status. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the proposed revision to Board Policy 3600 consultants.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a question. What were the the names of those bills? The letters, AB 334 and?
AB 2257 and then AB 323 and AB 3364. Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor of approving revisions to Board Policy 3600, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. So our next item on the agenda has two public comments. It is the approval of revisions to Board Policy 3100 for the budget. I'll turn it over to staff to explain.
Thank you, Dr. Begin. This policy is being updated to revise the section regarding general fund reserves. The proposed revision updates the district's reserve requirement to align with CSBA recommendation and is consistent with the percentage or amount specified in California code regulations, which requires a 3% reserve for districts with ADA of 1,001 to 30,000 students. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the proposed revision to the Board Policy 3100 budget.
All right, thank you. So I'm gonna, we have two public comments. I'll turn it over to Anne.
We have Michael Richardson and Todd Madison.
Right, so I'm not seeing Michael Richardson, but I'm seeing Todd. Hello, Todd.
Good evening. Again, Zoom is having trouble promoting Michael Richardson. I'm continuing to work on it, but we may have to use just the allow to talk function. So I'll continue working on it while Todd speaks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moon. All right. Hello, good evening, Todd. I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, thank you very much. I am unmuted. Good. So first, thanks, Anne, for fixing my mess up with the Google Form thing. Appreciate that. But tonight, so what we're really talking about is spending down our savings account, reducing the balance so we can minimize the political impact of having given out $10 million in bonus raises in October, isn't it? I'm sure you remember the $10 million you approved and also remember the $8 million in future cuts from our kids you approved the next month as a result of that. That allowed for a nice bump for those needy people making comfortable six-figure total compensation already, including our superintendent up to about $356,000 a year, the president of our teachers' union, who will likely end up over $200,000 a year. And the millions in future cuts, they'll come from kids where almost 60% qualify for free and reduced lunch with a significant percentage of English learners. But the impact on low-income kids is just incidental to our board, isn't it? One would also think the recent near-death experience with revenue projections at the beginning of COVID, followed by the dire news on enrollment declines, would prompt us to have a larger rainy day fund, not a smaller one. No sane family would come close to having their home foreclosed on, finally get back on their feet and then decide it was time to have less cushion in the bank, not more. But then having been on the state's bankruptcy watch list for almost five years demonstrates the lack of financial sanity in our board, doesn't it? The windfalls of COVID, the recent budget surplus make it easy to paper over the problems this year. Following the numbers is hard, but all criticism aside, I'm sure Dr. Vitale, Dr. Norman, the entire rest of the cabinet know what our long-term outlook looks like. They know what red ink means. And they know what to do about it also, but they won't. Instead, we see a proposal to reduce our reserve for economic uncertainties as if economic uncertainties aren't going to happen. That means spend down your rainy day fund in English to the rest of us. So does that sound like solid financial management to anyone? There are a lot of families out there that were very happy to have had some savings set aside in spring 2020. When campaigning, I spoke to people at their wits' end over lack of work or finding ways to take care of kids while doing what work they could find. No one in education had those concerns, of course. They simply continued to get paid and give themselves bonus raises at that. For those who may be considering running for other offices, you will hear about your vote on this one in that election. Cutting our reserves right now is really just another bit of financial mismanagement and a long trail, not something that looks good on a resume for higher office. We know what the objective is. Allow the district to give itself more money while minimizing what you need to cut from our kids to afford it by spending from our savings. The fact that that helps you make you look good now by putting the future in danger is meaningless, isn't it? So it's just another demonstration of the reasons why we need school choice. Let parents choose a school that puts their kids' interests first. Californiaschoolchoice.org, volunteer. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Moon, were you able to get our other speaker, Michael?
I'm getting a message that he's declining to be promoted to panelists, but I'm going to open his mic just in case he does want to speak. So Mr. Richardson, talking is permitted by you right now if you want to?
I'm here.
Hello, Michael. Great. I'm glad you're here. Sorry for the technology.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
I support whatever, everything Todd said. You know, you people, here we go again. You people are stealing from our kids in order to pay yourselves and your cronies. And, you know, you need to undo the bonuses you gave to the teachers and yourselves, which you didn't deserve. And I'm just so disgusted with this board. We are going to do everything we can. We're going to work our tails off to vote your people out of control of our kids' money because you don't deserve it. I graduated from Jefferson Junior High School in 1955. Wow. And Ocean Side High School in 1959 with honors. Went to San Diego State, graduated distinction. Went to Cal, to University of California. And and all these things were possible because of the great education in Oceanside schools back then. Now they're in the toilet and I want to, I just, we'll do everything we can to get rid of you. You are all despicable, disgusting, despicable.
All right, Michael. We have families and children watching this, so you can continue in public comment, but keep it civil, please. We do have families and children watching. All right. Thank you, done for this evening. So moving on, I will, we have to vote on this item. Do we have any comments or questions?
No, I don't. I support this item. It makes perfect sense. We are still maintaining our 3% level that the state mandates that we hold on to and we do not have any issues to where we would need to get that delta between the two and the three and the 5%. If COVID wasn't it where the state would come in and take all our money, I don't know what would be a circumstance where we or other districts would need to have that little cushion of reserve. So LA City School District has a 1% reserve, again, set by the state. So I'm just following the state rules and that's 3% for us.
And you made a motion? Is that your motion?
I do make that motion to carry that.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
I just want to do a brief comment on this one. At first, thinking about reducing the reserve, I was initially concerned about it, but this falls in line with best practices across the region and the state. The reserve itself, 3% is for the most dire emergency. This doesn't mean that we need to, we're going to do anything out of the ordinary. We're going to continue to look at our budget to make sure that we fall in line and and have a long-term positive outlook for our budget. So we take that very seriously and we're going to be doing that over the next few months as we develop our budget in June. So stay tuned. If you're concerned about this, keep coming back. We're going to have good conversations about it.
And I just want to share that, you know, working with several school districts, we need to be competitive. There's a huge staffing shortage. During the pandemic, it was our employees, our teachers and our classified group keeping us afloat, working with the families and the students. And in order to attract, retain and recruit highly effective employees, we have to stay competitive and they work hard. So I, you know, people can say all they want about the budget. This 3% is what's required by the state. What we had before was above that and it drew us that third year into this qualified status. Call it a self-inflicted wound. And so now we're just aligning with the state. This is one of the different ways that we're approaching our budget to make sure that we're financially fiscal moving forward. So yes, we are responsible. Any more comments or I'll call for the vote? All in favor of Item 10F, Approval of Revisions to Board Policy 3100 Budget, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Sorry. Moving on to our next item, 10G, Adoption of New Board Policy 6146-1, High School Graduation Requirements.
Yes, good evening. This board policy is going to reflect a new law, AB 204, which allows districts to be able to award graduation and high school diplomas to those students who have been impacted by COVID-19 based on the closures and remote learning. It allows us to award honorary degrees or honorary diplomas to terminally ill students and students who are visiting from other countries. It also allows us to offer and provide a fifth year of instruction and credit recovery for students so that they can achieve their high school diploma. This board policy reflects our current practice and we recommend approval of this board policy to align with our current practices in our district.
I'll make a motion to approve. Any questions for staff or comments? All right.
You're muted, Stace.
Sorry about that. I'll try that again. I'll try that again. It was my turn and I'm not a boomer yet. So anyways. All right. I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving Item 10G, Adoption of New Board Policy for High School Graduation, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Moving on to Item 10H, Approval of Revisions to Board Policy 6159, Individualized Education Program.
Yes, this policy is an update for the policy that was originally adopted in 2011. It reflects the importance and the belief of the board to provide a free, appropriate public education, often referred to as FATE, to all students who reside within the Oceanside Unified School District attendance boundary areas. This includes students who have been suspended or expelled from students, students who are incarcerated and also for students who range in age from 18 to 21 who need additional support as adults with specific disabilities. It is recommended that we approve the proposed revisions to Board Policy 6159.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Do I have any questions or comments for staff? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving Item 10H, Revisions to Individualized Education Program, say aye.
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 Motion carries, motion carries five zero. Next item on the agenda, 10I, Approval of Revisions to Board Policy 6159.1, Procedural Safeguards and Complaints for Special Education.
Yes, this revision to the policy, which was last adopted in 2010, recognizes the obligation of the district to provide a free, appropriate public education or FATE and that we encourage that all disputes or concerns be resolved at the lowest informal level and that families are able to provide any information that may be needed for a due process hearing to make sure that the board will be informed of those due process hearings. We recommend approval of this revision to Board Policy 6159.1 to reflect our current practice.
Thank you, Dr. Levy, for the explanation. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Right, I have a second. All right, any questions or comments for staff? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item ten I. Say aye.
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 Motion carries five, zero. Moving on to item ten J approval of revisions to board policy six, one, five, nine point two, non-public, non-secretarian school and agency services for special education.
Thank you. This policy was last updated in twenty-ten and this covers our non-public, uh, schools, our non-public schools that serve some of our students who have the most severe needs and requires that we verify that these non-public schools provide staff with training for the unique behavioral needs of students who are being served at the public, uh, non-public school. And also to make sure that when a FAPE, an offer of FAPE is required for a non-public school, that we do pay the full amount of that tuition as outlined in law. This will, uh, will basically, uh, reflect our current practice and we recommend approval of the revisions to policy six, one, five, nine point two.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
First and second, any questions or comments for staff? All right. I'm looking at my colleagues here. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item ten J revisions to board policy six, one, five, nine point two. Say aye.
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 Right, motion carries five, zero. All right, moving on to public comments on non-agenda items. I believe we have five individuals that will be speaking tonight. We are happy to receive comments about items and issues that are not on tonight's agenda. And I just want to remind you, you have three minutes and I just want to remind you that we have seventy people watching tonight. So just try to keep it civil with your language because there are families and students watching and we want to model positive behavior. So, Anne, can you call up our first speaker?
Okay, uh, like you said, we have five and that will be Todd Madison, Patty K, Patrick Higuera, Rosa, Rosie Higuera, and Katie Taylor. Todd Madison.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Thanks again. So tonight I'd like to talk again about having a board that actually puts our kids' interest first, over and above the special interests and the adults in the district. Oceanside Unified has great schools. Uh, my kids, my three kids attended school there from kindergarten through graduation. They got a great education from some wonderful teachers. My wife and I know a lot of great teachers, support staff, principals and administrators, just the best of people. Unfortunately, over those seventeen years, we've seen the district move farther away from what's doing best for our kids versus what benefits themselves, the adults in the district. Our district has forgotten who provides the money that goes into their paychecks, we, the parents, and who is supposed to be their first priority, which is our kids. The school board in front of us is supposed to be the voice of parents in our district, but as we've seen so much, particularly in the last couple of years, they appear to be more the voice of employees and adults in the district, not so much parents and kids. That was so evident just a few months ago. Our board was faced with a budget that projected a need for millions in cuts from our kids in the future. The response is to make those cuts deeper by adding almost ten million dollars to them to further pad the compensation of people mostly well into six figures already. Is that kids first? If you want to see where someone's priorities lie, take a look at what they spend their money on. If you recognize this, if you feel education dollars should be spent on education, if you're a person who sees problems and wants to fix them, how about helping fix this one? How would you like to run for school board this year? This year is an election year. It's time for parents to step up and take control of our board to make it work for our kids, not for special interests. Districts one, three and four are up for election. The district website has maps. If you're not sure which district you're in, go to the Board of Education section. If you're listening to this, you care about the education of our kids. Is it time to step up and run? I'm a co-director of the Oceanside Parent Association and the Parent Association is planning on doing what it can to support kids-first candidates in the next election. If you'd like to discuss what running for board is all about, email us. The email address is oceanside.usd@parentassociation.net. That's oceanside.usd@parentassociation.net. And lastly, we all know that school choice is the real solution. Real power comes when parents can simply choose a different school if their board, their district or their union is putting themselves first, not our kids. We need signatures on our petition to get it on the ballot. We're doing great so far, but we've got a big job ahead of us. Join us to help that by going to Californiaschoolchoice.org, signing up to help getting out, getting signatures for the effort. That's Californiaschoolchoice.org. Let's take back our education system, make it work for our kids, not for the special interests for a change. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Patty K. Thank you. I think this will be of interest to all the, uh, those of you on the board as parents and grandparents. It, uh, there is Assembly Bill seventeen eighty-five that's going up to the state and it is called the Parents' Bill of Rights. And it simply, um, re-insures what most of us expect and some of the items included would be for parents to be allowed to be involved in any teachings related to sexual health, education and HIV prevention. And the procedure to have their child opt out if, if they wish. They should be allowed an annual newsletter to learn about the nature and purpose of clubs and activities offered at their minor child's school. The school would post information for parents regarding the following topics. Again, how to opt out of the comprehensive sexual education program. How to get school choice options offered by the local education agency. About immunization requirements. How to review statewide standardized assessment results. And those parents listening, I would like to refer you to click on the four L on tonight's agenda to view the current test scores. The Parents' Bill of Rights would allow the parents to inspect instructional materials, including curriculum materials. These are all different things that we've come to expect, but it just reinforces in an actual bill of rights. So all parents listening, please be aware of this bill that is due at your state assembly at seventeen eighty-five to reinforce your parents' bill of rights. And to that end, I request the school board, since the parents are acknowledged as the first teacher, that under, uh, number three reports along with the union and the school board members that you have, for equity's sake, of course, a parents' report also at each board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Patrick. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. The little children, the little children were brought to him and at that he might put his hands on them and pray, but the disciples rebuked them. But Jesus said, let the little children come to me and do not forbid them, for such is the kingdom of God. Furthermore, if anyone causes any of these little ones to stumble, it would be better for them to, to hang a millstone around their neck and be plunged into the depths of the sea. Those aren't my words. That's from Matthew nineteen. Julie, Eleanor, Mike, Eric, Stacy and Raquel. I hope you heard what I just said. BLM, CRT, twenty-seven genders? What are you trying to teach our kids? Why are you teaching this garbage? If, if us as parents want our kids to know this stuff, we'll teach them that. It's not up to you. Okay? That's not up to you at all. Why are you using your school platform to further your political agenda? That is, when did that ever come as being good? Teach the basics. It sounds like you guys have lost your way, your moral compass. It sounds like you've lost your way of what you're actually supposed to be doing. You're supposed to be teaching reading, writing, arithmetic, US history, our constitution and the bill of rights. And why are you putting a health clinic in a junior high? What is health equity training? Youth-specific services? Leave the medical issues to the hospitals. Again, your focus is reading, writing, arithmetic, US history, the US constitution. You guys have lost your focus. You need to refine your focus. Our scores are in the, are in the tank, like, you know, my wife already told you guys. You can't balance the budget. Everything you pass, you pass everything. I haven't heard one denial yet. Everything is, oh, I'll take a vote. I, okay, that's five to nothing. Do you guys ever turn down anything? Can, can you raise the scores? Can you balance the budget? Stop spending. What are you guys doing? I guess, uh, the one point one million dollars on your new office is more, uh, you know, that's more needed than our kids' education, right? I mean, you guys need a, you know, air conditioning and a warm place to sit, I guess. Eleanor, last month, when you ended the meeting, I believe your comment was, we are doing the best we can. Well, you know what? Your best is heartbreakingly sad because you guys, you guys are, it's just ridiculous what you're doing. You're cowards because you won't see us in person. Oh, I think it's great to stay on, uh, on, on view. Yeah, whatever. You guys are shameful. You should be ashamed of yourselves. Uh, shame. And I'm sure your parents would be of you too. Thanks.
Thank you.
Rosie. Rosie Higuera.
All right. So, um, I see that the superintendent can, uh, vote for someone to be a delegate for Region Seventeen. I asked that Eleanor Evans not be nominated to be, um, a delegate. She has proven that she is for CRT, she's for LGBTQ, as well as Eric Joyce. Eric Joyce and Eleanor Evans, um, both, um, are very progressive. They do not fight for families or are, are conservative values. Our family values are for marriage, for family. We're not for all of this confusion, gender confusion and all of this racist teaching. You guys do really need to bring up the test scores. Um, I understand Eric Joyce is running for city council. Please do not vote for him. He can't balance a budget here and I don't know, um, what he would do in the city council. I, I don't think that, that is what we need in our city council. If he can't do a good job here, um, with our school board budget or focus on the needs that we're telling you that we want as parents. We want you guys to teach, stick to the facts of, um, the constitution and history, bring up those math and language arts score, scores and science. Um, if you go on the website, parents, I would love for you to see all of the LGBTQ, the Respect Online course. All of this is teaching kids, um, all of this filth. And they have no place teaching our kids any of this stuff. Whatever happened to teaching our kids about abstinence and waiting for marriage? There's a concept right there. Instead of handing out condoms and promoting abortion and all this other ridiculousness. Um, you guys have all proved as a board that you are not for our children. We need competent people on our board and we didn't, we need a new superintendent that has conservative values that actually fights for families because families are the foundation of our society and they're the building block of America. And so you guys are the guardians and the keepers of the gate and you have proven, Mike Blessing, Raquel Alvarez, Stacy Begin, I don't know what you guys have do, have done to help further promote families. Families are so important and our voices are not being heard. So it sounds like we do, as parents, we do need to run for these positions and I hope that many of you do. And those of you that don't, I hope that you pull your kids out of school and vote for school of choice so that fourteen thousand dollars per child can be given to you and you can send your child to private school or homeschool them with your values and your family morals. The school does not have the right to teach our kids all of this crap. So I want you parents to show up. I want you to get involved and I want you to know what's going on and let the school board know that this is unacceptable, unacceptable.
Katie Taylor.
Hello, Katie. You have to unmute yourself, Katie.
Okay, I found the right button. Okay, so I just wanted to say, Eric Joyce has decided he has done all the damage he can do at the school board. And now he's busted our budgets at the school board, given teachers raises. You know, he's helped sell school property. So to avoid that the school board, the district will be taken over by the San Diego County because of their insane management of the school board budget. But let me just warn Eric. Uh, if he gets on city council, you know what? People, they have to meet in person. And they don't wear a mask there, even though Eric tonight even spoke how much he believes in masks. Yet if you go to his campaign websites, there's pictures of him cheek to cheek, standing right next to kids with no mask on and they have no mask on. So I'm just telling you, everybody, he says one thing at a school board, but he does something else when he's promoting himself for city council. The other thing about city council, there's going to be a lot more eyes on the money. I wish more parents had the eyes on the money at this school board, but it won't be that way on the city council. You just can't throw things to unions the way you've done on the school board. People are going to be watching the waste and they won't tolerate what's happened in city council because the city council has a conservative backbone that wouldn't tolerate this. I'm also very concerned about the board and staff members who spoke tonight. Does anybody understand what a grant is? If it's a state or federal grant, it's not free money. That money came from a taxpayer. And this is the problem. You're teaching kids, everything is free. You're promoting everything you do. Oh, it's a grant. Don't worry about it. We got a grant. It doesn't cost us anything. Well, it costs somebody something. And this is what blows me away. The absolute ignorance of this Oceanside School Board staff and the school board themselves. And that's why you guys keep just running this board to the ground financially. And I'll tell you what, if any of you would watch the economic markets, Mayor Matt Hall at the city council meeting tonight in Carlsbad warned, warned the city of the inflation impact, the cost of rising water prices and everything else, and to watch their buzzet, budget. Not one person here tonight has expressed any concern about the spending, the overspending and the inflation that everybody sees every day when they're out on the street that's going to impact the cost over this next year. So I just hope everybody votes for school choice, takes the fourteen thousand dollars and gets their kids into a good school that really wants to teach. And I think Rosie Higuera, who just spoke, man, do I agree with her one thousand percent. This board is teaching stuff they have no right to be teaching our children. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Well, that concludes our public comment tonight. Um, our last item on the agenda is a board and staff discussion about the election of the twenty twenty-two CSBA Region Seventeen Delegate Assembly candidate. I'm going to hand this over to Eleanor.
You're going to hand it over to me, Stacy?
Oh, I'm going to hand it over to you. Sorry.
Yes, thank you so much. Uh, I'm just going to lead this vote on Delegate Assembly for the California School Board Association for Region Seventeen. And our own Eleanor Evans, um, is an incumbent and would like to serve on Delegate Assembly, uh, once again. Uh, she is one of nine people for whom we may cast a vote. And so, uh, this board just needs to agree on up to nine people, um, to vote for. So, um, you have, uh, the names and the information and you also might, may want to recommend to one another. Um, if you know any of the people, uh, you might want to endorse them. So I just need you all to, to engage in a discussion and select up to nine people to serve on our Region Seventeen Delegate Assembly.
I'm in a very fortunate position in that I know all but maybe perhaps two of the people I've met with them, talked with them, in some cases even worked with them in other capacities. So, um, I feel very fortunate. I know Eric may have some, some, um, folks in mind, but I'm looking at in terms of where CS, CSBA was when I first went on the board and where it is now. And with the team we have now, we've been able to move CSBA forward. We've been able to make it more viable in the community. We're still pushing towards for fair and full funding for our. We're still pushing towards for fair and full funding for our schools. And it's become less of a quote unquote, I'll just say sewing circle, okay? And more of a viable organization that's, um, answerable to the community, that's involved with the community. And, and it's making changes. So from my perspective, you know, we're a team, we collaborate, we communicate. And, um, I think we're doing wonderful work. As a member of CSBA, I am, uh, and I was appointed that, I didn't ask for it or was even aware of the Equity, um, Chair. And for the first time, you know, we see an organization that is more inclusive and is really concerned about each and every child and really wants quality public education. Okay? Um, I don't know if you want to go name by name or what?
Do you have recommendations, Eleanor?
I really do.
Can you say those names so Julie can record them? And then if any of the other board members want to add to those?
Okay, Maria Betancourt, Castanada, or Castaneda, National City, National, uh, School Board, Eleanor Evans, myself, um, Oceanside Unified School Board, Umberto, Milan, San Isidro School, School District, Claudine Jones, Carlsbad Unified School District, Jiwa Muk Delmar School District, Tamara Otero, Cajon Valley School District, and Marla Strich. And I mispronounced her name, Strich, okay? And Sunita's Union School District. And that's, those are the folks that I nominate.
I would like to add Michelle Gates to that for National School District.
Oh, boy, we're going to have a problem.
Hi, do we have too many?
Yeah, I have Marco Amorall and Lucia Garde that I'd like to add to that. But I did agree on Tamara Otero and Umberto and Marla. So those three were on my list as well that were previously nominated.
That nine? I think that's nine.
Is that nine even?
Eric, who did you?
Right now, we have ten names, uh, up for consideration. Uh, three names were, uh, double-checked. And so, um, if you want to go with those three names that were double-checked, it's Tamara, Marla, and Umberto. And then, um, the other ones all have, uh, one vote. And if you want me to repeat those names, I can. Brock, you were going to say something?
Uh, what it, who did Eric nominate?
I, I nominated Marco Amorall from South Bay and Lucia Garde from, I think she's from Nash.
Lucy Garde is from Chula Vista.
Chula Vista, thank you. Lucy, in particular, I've, I've collaborated with over the last three years. She's been really supportive and helpful.
So do you want to like push her as the ninth one, Eric?
I'm going for Michelle Gates. So since I don't have, I got to add, and we have two, Eleanor Evans and Michelle Gates, so. Michelle's an educator. She's a teacher, very similar to Eric in another school district. I'm all for people with education background stepping into board member roles, so I'd like to support her.
So, trustee Evans, do you have anyone that's on your borderline?
It's on my borderline?
Yeah, we have ten.
We can do one, we can do nine, you know, um.
I don't remember how many everybody put forward. If I would have thought we would be over the, the nine limit, I would have thought of a more systematic way to do this.
Yeah, we, we never have been. So Marla, Tamara, and Umberto got two endorsements. Uh, Marco, Maria, Eleanor, uh, does anyone want to give Eleanor another endorsement so we can put her into the done category? Anyone? Yes, Stacy? Okay, Eleanor, Rock, okay. So you have, uh, four that are for sures and we have five votes left. And up for consideration, you have Marco, Maria, Michelle, Claudine, Jiwa, and Lucy.
Do we want to go with all nine?
We currently have ten up for consideration, Eleanor.
There's someone you'd like to remove from your list, Eleanor?
Well, Maria Betancourt Castaneda.
If you remove that person, uh, then we are at, uh, nine. So we want to move forward with those nine. Marco, Eleanor, Michelle, Umberto, Claudine, Jiwa, Tamara, Marla, and Lucy. Is that good?
Do we not have Michelle on there? Did we say Michelle?
Yeah, Michelle's, uh, she's one of them, yes.
She's in there.
Uh huh, yeah. Stacy's one pick, uh, Eleanor's two picks, and, I'm sorry, uh, Eric's two picks and then the other picks were by, uh, Eleanor. Recommendations.
Sounds good to me. Do we need to vote on it?
Yeah, I think so.
And I think we do need to vote on that, right? This will be, this will be our slate of people.
Right, so we do need a motion and a second to.
I'll make a motion to approve those nine folks that we, that Julie just named off.
Second. Second.
Thanks, Mike. So we have a first and a second. All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of supporting those nine TSBA delegates, say aye.
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 All right. We have consensus, five zero. All right. With that said, does anybody have any final words for tonight?
Thanks again for the office. That's, uh, it's going to be a winner. Everybody's going to love it.
Thank you.
I just want to put a shout out to our parents and our families. Please support your schools right now as they're getting back into their fundraising. I know our accounts are down in our PTAs and PTOs and our boosters that we have within our schools. And so I ask that you support your schools in any possible way. Those they're getting, they're doing out these dinner nights out and fundraising and everything. But be a part of your, your PTAs and PTOs. I mean, that's where you get your voices heard too. And how you get back into your DPAC meetings and, and into all those, um, committee meetings that we have within the community and how you get, you know, you, you're making sure that you're in, you're doing the surveys and you're understanding the surveys and you're giving the feedback in the survey. So just, um, get back into those things with your students and for your, your, for your students. Those are important things to be able to support your school sites, that you support the staff, um, with everything that they do because they do so much for our students as it is. And so just to be able to support them in different ways and to support your students and everything and just appreciate everybody that's around there and at your school site. So, um, it's a difficult thing. I know it's hard sometimes because we do so much as parents anyway. But to add one more thing to your plate, sometimes it's just another thing. But I know we, you know, we did PTA and PTO and all those things for years as parents, you know, when my, when my son was in elementary and they're hard. And, but the support is, to get the support is even harder. So making sure that you're a part of that is important. So just, just get out there and reach out and how you can be a part of that to each of your school sites. Thank you. Thanks, Raquel. I want to thank staff for the presentations and all the diligence they did with bringing us the information that we requested at our last board meeting for this board meeting. So thank you.
I just say, utilize our services. We have vaccines, free vaccines in the city, right at the street from the DO, right at the street from Oceanside High School. Almost every day of the week, walk-ups are welcome. Use it. We have low vaccination rates in our city compared to the rest of the county. So let's get those vaccination rates up, let's keep each other safe. Thank you.
Great, all right. With that said, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at eight forty PM. Thank you, board colleagues. Have a great night.
Thank you. Good night.
Everybody.